For being here, stand with us if you would. We're gonna begin with prayer and then if you'll join us in the pledge. Gonna call on our revenue commissioner Chuck Patterson.
Thank you for this wonderful day. Thank you for all these people that are concerned about.
Amen. Join us for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
We do wanna welcome you here. We appreciate your interest in the business of our county and appreciate your support of these efforts. First on the agenda would be public hearings. We have nothing scheduled, public comment from citizens and there's nothing scheduled at this time. No awards and presentations, so next would be comment from other elected officials and appointed officials. Commissioners, if you're not opposed, I'd like to hold on inviting Mike Jones to the podium. Mike here is here specifically to address the rails to trails conversation, so I'd like to just invite him forward at that time, Mike, if that's okay with you. And but other electeds are here. Chuck, do you have anything you wanna share from revenue commissioner?
We're at nine hundred thousand dollars that we have not collected. For the twenty twenty stock we've captured at twelve point four million, we're pretty much on the same target as it always has been. And it's kinda like the same people on the same list, but we're working really hard to get that collected.
All right, it's been a busy couple of months, ain't it?
Yes, it really has.
Thank y'all for the good work. Sheriff, do you have anything you wanna address at this time?
Uh, no, sir, I'll I'll wait my turn.
Okay, we'll come back to you, I'm sure. All right. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda items, the approval of the December eighth, twenty twenty minutes, and also the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for December of two thousand twenty. We can take those as a single item. Is there a motion to approve those items or do you have corrections or questions on it?
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, there's a motion second. Anybody else have anything you need to address on it? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, those are approved, thank you. So we move right on to old business and that's where we have the rails to trails set for conversation. We are pleased to have State Representative Mike Jones with us. Mike, if you don't mind, I'd love to invite you to the podium here to share with the commission about rails to trails, but also about things, any other things that may be pertinent from your place in the House and Washington, I mean, tell us whatever's on your heart and then we'll get into the conversation. If you stay with us, we'll we'll get into the conversation on rails to trails.
Sure, well, first of all, thank you for allowing me to come up and visit. For those members of the commission that I've had the pleasure of working with in the past, it's good to see you again. And for you new members, I look forward to working with you. And you'll find out, I work with you a good bit, so we'll be talking. At some point, I also wanna make sure we have an opportunity for the new members that y'all get my cell number. It's the only cell I've ever had. I give it to everybody, so you're not getting special treatment, but I want you to have it. Because there're gonna be times during the session, and it starts February second this year, there'll be times during the session that you probably won't want to talk to me. And it may be at some weird hour. Sometimes we find ourselves on the house floor at twelve midnight, one in the morning, you never know. But if it's an issue of its importance to you personally, then I want you to feel comfortable in contacting me, so I'll make sure you have that information, okay? As far as the the session goes, we are planning on having the twenty twenty-one regular session. It will begin February second on a Tuesday at noon. I'm actually the person in the House responsible for setting up the protocols and procedures for the COVID issues that we have to deal with everywhere. And we've been working to that end. And in fact, I think probably this week, should be this week, we'll probably publish some of those procedures. But our our goal is to have a normal, as normal a session as possible. That being said, it is not gonna be normal. There's simply no way to have a normal session with what we're experiencing. We're gonna have testing that'll take place for both staff and members on a regular basis while we're in session. We're gonna have masks being mandatory warrant throughout the building by both visitors and by members. Social distancing, pretty much the same kinda thing you're seeing in this room here today. But we'll also be doing some other things. We will be allowing the public into the state house, but it'll be limited to certain areas. And that we will have meeting spaces designated that will be limited in the number of people that can go in a space. But we are we are gonna work very hard to keep it as transparent as we can. We've also invested a great deal in audiovisual equipment in some very old buildings that probably never have seen that type of tech before. But we've we've done that. And so there'll be five different locations where we'll have five different committees that will meet, that will be live feed. So when you look on the legislative website this year, used to, the only thing you saw with the House side was audio feed and just on the House floor. That's not the same this year. So the committees, when they meet, will be live feed, audio and visual. Same thing on the House floor, be live feed, audio and visual. That's the only way that we could keep the transparency that we want and we desire. Our members, we have a hundred and five House members. You cannot place a hundred and five House members on the House floor and get anywhere near social distancing. So we are now moving House members, some on the House floor, some in the gallery, and we're also placing some House members in two rooms behind the gallery. And so it's gonna be an interesting time. We will be having session. We plan to take up some very important issues for the state. I think you'll see some liability issues regarding the virus for businesses. They'll be addressed fairly early. I think you'll see some tax issues that'll be addressed dealing with the payments that citizens have received relatively early. And you'll see some economic development bills that will probably be addressed pretty early. So as far as the session, that's what to expect. And before I get on to this other issue, do y'all have any questions for me or about session that I can take up now?
Don't think so.
Okay. Well, as far as this other issue that y'all are discussing, rails to trails, it, this is an issue that I've been aware of for quite a while, but I've not played as active a role until this year, actually, I guess, twenty twenty. And I got involved probably the most around August is when I started getting more heavily involved. And frankly, the reason I got more involved is I started reading more about the project. There's there are two trails that are similar in size within a relatively short drive from this area. They're about three hours away. One's in Mississippi, one's in North Alabama. The one in North Alabama, the smallest portion of it is in Alabama, the larger portion is actually in Georgia. But we, you know, I'm not one to reinvent wheels. I don't know how you guys work, but I hate reinventing wheels, so I would much rather look at what someone else has done and learn from their mistakes, learn from what they did right. And and also look at what they've done to answer a lot of questions for what we might have to confront. And so that's how I started. I started reading as much as I could on this type of project. I started working with an individual in Tuscaloosa who's an expert who works for the University of Alabama. I think his name is Brian Rushing, I believe, Greg, is that correct? And Brian's the one who has copies of all the deeds that from the property owned by the railroad for the length of the span. It's approximately a forty-three, forty-three mile span from Andalusia to Geneva. It goes through Op, goes through Kinston. We've had some very, very preliminary meets just to check interest in the project. The interest does seem to be there, so the next step was what you're good looking at now. And that's basically a resolution that says that we'll form a partnership to start digging deeper into the issue, asking more questions, learning more information. One of the first things that I that I'm advocating is that as soon as we can get organized, that we schedule a visit to one of these trails. And not only look at what they've done, but also talk with their elected officials and ask some of the very same questions you probably have of elected officials at those locations to see what their experience has been. And so that we can have some knowledge that we can relay back to our constituents here in our area. And so once again, I'm not looking to reinvent wheels. I think there's gonna be a lot of questions that I know I have. I expect most of you should have similar questions. And the best way to do that is let's get together, let's all get organized, and let's start asking those questions and visiting these other locations. The reason why I think this is a good potential project to support is, one, the information I have read indicates that the the return on the investment for these type trails is generally within three to four years. I don't know many investments I've ever even seen that the return on the investment is back within three to four years. That's phenomenal. And so from that standpoint, it gains my interest, because if it's a project that the return is that quick, we benefit thereafter even more, then I'm interested in that for our citizens and for our community. It's also something, and the type of trail we're looking at is a non-motorized trail, so there will be no four-wheelers, there'll be no motorcycles, there'll be no any type of mechanized vehicle whatsoever. So you're looking at hikers, you're looking at bikers, and you're looking at potentially horseback riders. One of the trails, I believe it's the one in Mississippi, is partially an equine trail as well as hikers and bikers. And and my understanding is these trails are averaging about a hundred thousand people a year that visit these trails. Now, start looking at that from the standpoint of impact. They buy food, they generally get hotel space because they'll take some breaks. And they tend to spend money all throughout the communities they tend to go and visit. It is also very common that when these trails are as they're constructed, that communities will build things in their communities to help handle the business from the people who come through the trail. So for instance, the the center point of this trail, if it were to happen, would be the Kinston area. I would expect, since it goes right downtown Kinston, that they would have a pretty good financial gain at some point if this happens. And so this would be a good thing for Kinston from looking at that point of view. The two trailheads, which are Geneva and Covenant County, also, that's usually where it's a very good place to be. So the trailheads and the center point are some of the primary locations you would expect. Anytime it goes through a township or a community, it's gonna have some, it's gonna have economic impact. It's gonna better the community. And then frankly, we have a lot of people that like to hike and bike and ride horses. And the opportunity to ride or hike or ride a trail that's forty-three miles, there's just not many of those around. I mean, when you start trying to Google it and locate things like that, there's just not that many to choose from. Geneva had expressed more interest in this. They started doing something called River Fest. And in the course of River Fest, they started seeing the 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 community respond, that they had a lot of people visiting from all over the nation. And so their interest, at least that's what they discussed with us in this trail, was brought up more because of their experience in their in their River Fest. So I'm anxious to learn more about the River Fest. I think we're all anxious to learn more about how this could better our communities. But the first step is is to get organized and for us to get around a table so we can start asking the questions and learning more so that we can communicate that information back to our constituents. So this is literally step one in what will likely be like fifteen steps. This is nowhere near the end. This is just literally taking a step to learn more about it. And I'll try to answer any questions I can.
Projected timeframe that it could be completed if it was to take place?
Yeah, anytime you're looking at a trail this long, obviously, it's gonna take some time. So this is not a one-year project. This is probably a five to six to seven-year type of project. And frankly, it probably shouldn't be a quick project. If you're gonna have something like this, that's intended to last for a long period of time, we should do it right. And we should take the time to to do it right. There's also frankly, a lot of grants that are out there that could assist with this. And so once again, you also have to look at it as the way of grant cycles. Grant cycles, you apply for them on a yearly basis. Most of you guys are familiar with that. And as you apply for grants and you're looking at helping this project, that means each of one of these communities, Andalusia, Covenant County, Coffee County, Geneva, City of Geneva, Geneva County, could all be applying for grants that could help towards this project. And the goal being, obviously, that it doesn't create any financial burden for any particular community, that we all work together. And that's that's the approach to this type of project.
Mike, just one comment, and I know there are folks, other folks in the room that are interested. Make sure we agree and don't misspeak. The group that we're being asked to join in the formation of is is specifically to take the lead and and look at all of the issues to hold public hearings. So we get public input, public discourse on it.
That's correct.
To consider the funding options.
That's correct.
So although at the local level, we may have some input on that, I think that really this group will take the lead on that.
And frankly, right now, when you try to have a public hearing, we don't have enough data. We we need to go get and ask those questions and get more information.
I would think those are a year, eighteen months down the road. I mean, it's gonna take a while to compile that specific to this project if it if it moves forward. And you mentioned the funding opportunities. I know the U.S. Department of Transportation, since two thousand nine, so over the last twelve years, have provided over nine billion dollars in grant funding for six hundred and seventy-five plus projects across the country. So there's, that's just one of many, many sources. There's also private funding that's available. So it's interesting to consider because of the interest across the country, but a lot of questions to answer, obviously, so.
Well, and from the economic standpoint, obviously, once you make yourself a destination location where people are coming to your area for the purpose of something like this, now obviously, it's a stronger economic impact than just simply driving through your area. And so we already get the experience of beach traffic, the the good and the bad of beach traffic. But this would be a different type of of project.
Anybody else have questions for him?
This group, just gathering this information, who? Who is it?
Be all of us, be the.
I'm talking about the ones now that we're gonna get, they asking for this information.
As far as the different entities, the different governmental entities that would be joining this, this partnership?
Yeah, who is, you know, they, we've been asked to join this, but who?
City of Andalusia, City of Op, City of Geneva, Covenant County's being asked, Coffee County's being asked, Geneva County's being asked, Town of Kinston. I mean, we're actually, we're actually asking everybody to join, because this first step is not, it's not a commitment to say yes or no. It's a commitment to find out more information and to learn more about it. It's too early to be able to say yes or no. We were not there yet.
So we would be creating the Wiregrass Trail project?
Correct.
Partnership?
Partnership. And the purpose is to find out more information to see if this is a viable project. Does it appear to be from my research? That, and it's limited research. I I wanna ask a lot more questions myself. But it appears to be, and that's why it interests me for benefiting our community. But I'm in the same boat, you, a lot of you guys, I've probably got a lot more questions than I've got answers, and I'd like to learn more about it.
Just to to make all of you aware, what's before the commission under this old, old business section and that we're addressing is a resolution that was presented to us at the meeting, last meeting. It's been tweaked a little bit to make sure it spells out, I think, a little better what we're being asked to do. There are several whereas's, but the resolution, the resolves, say that the Covenant County Commission supports membership in the Wiregrass Trail Partnership, subject to periodic review by the full commission as information is provided by the WTP. And with this resolution, we authorize the chairman or other member of the commission, as may be designated by vote of the commission, to represent the interest of the commission in the rough quarter project for terms of three years. Any of that can be changed, but that's what it says now. Be it further resolved that membership in the partnership does not obligate the Covenant County Commission to any expenditures or other liabilities at this time, nor does it imply the commission's support of the Rails to Trails project beyond recognition that the project is worthy of study and consideration. Any obligations associated with this process and project will be proposed to the full commission for deliberation where appropriate. And so it's, it is, as you said, not a commitment beyond being at the table for conversation.
And one thing, I also wanna make sure it's clear that although you're saying you're designating somebody to be at these meetings, I hope you all come. I mean, don't think you're excluded. I would rather you all come if you'd like to, because I think we'll learn more about it. You'll have some questions that we may not have thought of. And frankly, that always contributes. That always makes it better. And so we all have different backgrounds. We all approach issues a little differently. So so do not think for a moment that you're just sending one person to a meeting. I hope that you will all consider being present for these meetings and and play a role in it.
Has anybody done a study on approximately what this project would cost?
That's step one if we agree on that type of step. I know that the City of Andalusia has a substantial grant that that I think that's their intention is to start looking at the the environmental studies and the early engineering studies is what you have to start with to start sustaining costs. And so that's the first steps if we choose to go that direction. But the City of Andalusia has made it very, very well known. That's their intent is to spend that, I I believe, is it four hundred thousand dollar grant? Four hundred thousand dollar grant towards that effort. That's their intention.
But nobody knows the total at the end.
And that's, we're way too early to know all that and and frankly, I don't, I don't like guessing. I'm not big on guessing. I'm big on finding out and doing, doing the work. So we're at the point of doing a lot of homework. That's that's the spot we're at now.
So nobody's done enough study or have you been to these other trails and said, is there barriers along there that protects the landowners if this does go through?
Well, frankly, that's what I hope is one of our first steps, and that's why I've not visited one of these places yet, because I'd like to. But I'm hoping that all of you guys, we can all plan on going at at the same time if possible. Because I think that's one of the best sources of information is go, let's talk with those elected officials in those those communities that have already done this and ask those exact same questions that I'm sure they had back then, too. Let's ask them. Let's see what they say. Let's be able to get some feedback and some interaction with them. Frankly, when someone's had that direct experience, made those hard decisions, and then saw the the results, I feel a lot more comfortable talking to that person than I do with somebody who's just reading data on a chart. That's who I'd like to talk to.
Because like I said, I've had a lot of people that have contacted me in the last several weeks that supported, but I still have a a lot of landowners along the trail with major concerns about it.
Right. And and frankly, that's what I would expect. I mean, if, for anybody that that is along that. Now, there are, I think there is a good bit of misinformation, but I think that's one of the first things we have to do is let's figure out what is reality, what's fact and what's not, and let's communicate that to our constituents. And that's one of the first things that I that I intend to do. I've already requested some of that information about, you know, the the type of ownership of the railroad property going through different communities. I just haven't received it yet. As soon as I receive it, it's my intention to start meeting with some of our communities in this county and and just showing a map, just laying it on a table, let everybody look at it. I don't, I'm not one of these trust me people. I'm one of these, I'd rather show you and let you see data and facts and see deeds, et cetera. I I'm I'm much more that type of approach. And but that's a lot of information. When you talk about a railroad line that's been there for a very long period of time, that's a, that's a big ask. So I've asked for that information. They tell me it is, they're putting it together. Once I receive it, frankly, I'd be glad to show every one of you the same information. Be happy to.
I'm much like Mike in the fact, look, I've been contacted by several in favor of it, that, you know, that would love to see it happen. And and I, look, to be totally honest, I can see the benefits of this. You and I talked earlier, and I I can see where it could benefit the county and the community. I've also been contacted by several that, and and to be frank and honest about it, if this were coming through my property, I'm sure I'd have an issue, too.
Yes, sir.
And everyone that contacted me that's in favor of it don't own a foot of property on this, and everyone that's contacted me against it, in fact, does own property, but against it. What I would have loved to say before today was a town hall meeting with these people. Both sides, I'd like to see both sides sitting here and hear the pros and cons from those people, from the landowner as well as those that, you know, would be using it. It's it's hard for me to agree to this when the constituents that I have are saying to me, Tony, don't put this in my backyard. You know, and it it's hard for me to to agree to do this when these, when these people are dumb. And like I said, I I think even they see the other side of it where it could have an economical impact, but yet still, they don't want this in their backyard.
And Mr. Thomas, don't misunderstand. That is not the decision we're making today, whether or not we're gonna do this or not.
I understand that. I understand that. But 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 also, this has been ongoing now for several months, that I've been hearing about it for several months. So we've had opportunity after opportunity to have that town hall meeting or to have these people here, and yet we haven't done it.
Well, respectfully, that's pretty much the reason why we're asking to start this, start this process, is to have that meeting and I'll and I'll be present when that meeting takes place. I I believe we gotta have enough facts and data to actually show what we're talking about. And and I don't have that yet, and I think we have to get that together.
I don't think at this point, Mike, we've been able to get that. I know Mike and I have talked about it and and I've asked to name me somebody that's on this committee, and I've yet to get the first name of who.
On this group we're talking, putting together, well, that's the whole point. We're putting it together now.
Putting it together now. It it doesn't exist.
It it doesn't exist right now. This is, we are.
The way it was presented to us, that this group is who we will want to join with.
Right.
Not that we're, they're trying to establish a group to come along.
Right. There's not an existing partnership. We're all, we're trying to get it established now. So these different communities are all having these resolutions brought up at their different meetings. As of yesterday, I was only aware of Andalusia, Op, and Coffee County that have already approved their resolutions. And and so those three are the only ones that have approved as of yesterday. Now, there, I know that Geneva was was looking to consider theirs. I do not know the outcome of that one. I knew you guys had yours up, but that's the whole point. We're setting it up now, so there is not an established group yet. There's not a a meeting of partnership yet. We've had some meetings to with different communities trying to establish interest, if there was interest to even take this step. That's the only thing that's ever occurred. And some of those meetings were where I learned about some of that that very base data, that base information. What we're talking about setting up is something much more focused, where we do have an organized group, where we do have organized meetings, and we are targeting, getting information to find out if we're gonna do this project or not. And so we're we're literally at the beginning steps of setting this up. So you're at the ground level right now.
If you look at the middle paragraph of the resolution, it says, whereas the jurisdictions directly affected by the abandonment of the Alabama Railroad Railway held by CSX Transportation are establishing the Wiregrass Trail Partnership for the purpose to review and feasibility of developing such a trail as well as options for funding and management, as well as impacts to affected landowners, mitigation of any potential negative impacts of development of such recreational trails. So it tells you there, it's it's in the process. The jurisdictions being the ones he named, Covenant County, Coffee County, Geneva County, and the cities and towns between Andalusia and Geneva.
I think if we'd have had a town hall type meeting prior to last month or month before or today, there would have been more confusion after it was over with. I don't think we have enough information. Like you said, you don't have enough information. I certainly don't. Neither do the other commissioners. We are hungry for information to make a decision and answer the questions of the landowners.
And I'm not willing to make the the final step of committing to the project without knowing more. And I'm in the same rope boat y'all are in. But also, you know, any of y'all have ever been to a meeting I've ever, ever hosted, I I'm all about making sure that we have the information in hand, that we can answer questions right there on the spot if possible. Oftentimes, I try to have the experts in the room with me so that those questions that are asked can be answered right there on the spot. And frankly, the type of town hall meeting that I would foresee in this is we would bring, either have him here in person or have him here through some sort of audiovisual, Brian Rushing from Tuscaloosa, because he has worked with other communities doing his exact same things. He is the expert that we're looking to for for knowledge. And potentially even some of those elected officials from those other communities. I mean, I think that would also be helpful to answer some of those questions. But that's the type of meeting that I would 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 hope we would have, is one where we're not just guessing, one where we've done the homework and for good or bad, we're gonna lay it out there, good or bad, so that everybody can see it. And I'm not saying it's gonna all be good. I don't know, Mr. Thomas, some of it may be bad, but I think we have to put it all out there before we make a decision.
We we go back to, you know, like you said, Op and Andalusia and all the other, and Kinston, that's inside the cities. We, when you talk about rural and you dividing somebody's land where it's an acre or two hundred acres, maybe on the backside and, you know, what's gonna happen on my property and what we bringing in? And that's what we're facing, you know, what these people are asking us. What what are we, what are we getting into? And so how are we gonna be protected or not protected? Is this gonna have a fence? Is it going, and if it is, am I gonna be able to access my land from one side to the other? These are the big questions that somebody's been living there, family, generation farms or whatever, or just bought property. And you bringing this in and, you know, it's just, it's just the rural people and the way they feel, you know, and and nothing wrong, because I'm one. And I don't want nobody on the backside of my place, you know, just walking around. I'm gonna go see what he's doing. And, you know, you 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 have that unrest, and that's what they're asking. What, how would this be pleased? How will it, how will it affect my access to my own property and such as that? And that's what we're looking at, to me.
And frankly, I think you're one of those legitimate questions. I think those are the exact same questions that we need to find out more information about. We need to visit these other trails, talk with those elected leaders. Frankly, I'd love to even walk a portion, not all of it, but a portion of it.
They said motorized, so we could get on a front and ride.
I I don't think, actually, I don't think these are motorized. I think these are.
Non-motorized.
Non-motorized. So I I would like to to learn more about them, but I also would like to take photographs, because once again, if someone can't physically go, and we're going on behalf of the people we represent, I'd rather us go there and take some photographs, take some video so we can show people, not just say things, examples of what's being done in other places. My experience is that that goes a long way towards towards easing some concerns if you can show how it works, because it's been done before, rather than we hope it works this way. That's not as, that doesn't give me enough enough comfort just guessing, so I'd much rather let's let's go show things.
I just know that expense goes, you know, you got trussels. It's got to be rebuilt. And if you're gonna do it in asphalt or chip seal or whatever, the expense we incur on roads that's already established and fit, which I know it's got a rock base, but, you know, it's been grown up now. It's, it would have to be completely re-cleaned and cleared from all the storm damages and such. So there's a big expense there, you know, and like I said, the trussels, I don't know about the one going through. So there, there's a big expense there, you know, and like I said, the trussels, I don't know about the one going through, uh, Geneva County down there, what it, what condition it's in going over a big river.
It doesn't exist.
It does exist.
It's, it's no longer there.
It's no longer there.
It's not there. And then you have the safety issues across in Highway eighty-four, three thirty-one, how you gonna get people, kids on bicycles, parents, whatever, across that. They all need to be part of this group, don't they? Because those are the questions to answer.
That's personal.
We mentioned this, Mr. Rushing guy. Do you reckon he would do a video conference?
I'm sure if he was asked, he'd be happy to.
If he's done these before, he can have a lot of these answers already.
He can, and and I, I honestly, I have no doubt whatsoever that he could, he would be glad to, to do that with us. Um, but I still think us visiting a site and seeing it for ourselves. Uh, I mean, once again, guys, when we put our own eyes on, on something, it's a lot easier for us to visualize and see it when we've actually seen it.
Well, I've been, like I told some of these commissioners, I've been to one called the Katy Trail in Missouri. It goes all across state of Missouri.
Right.
But it's a state park.
Right.
That's how it's maintained, taking care of the whole ball of wax, it's a state park. Oh, it's very nice.
And and most of these rails and trails are not on state parks. Most of them are very similar to the kind of route we're looking. Uh, and there, and there are some already in our state that exist, um, but none of them is long as this potential trail. And that's the benefit of this trail is the, is the length of it. Uh, that draws more people because they like the idea of riding a horse that many miles, being able to, to do that. Uh, some people who like to camp and hike, that's the interest in it. Um, but as far as those other issues, those are not unique questions.
Well, this trail, they'll have to have camping areas because from what I understand, this trail closes at dark.
And that's one of the benefits to a lot of these communities is that they can set those type of things up. And and have trailhead locations where people can camp, um, stop and buy food. Um, I mean, those are the normal things that people do when they, when they hike. If you, and and listen, don't, you can tell I haven't hiked in a long time, okay? But there was a day. Uh, you typically don't wanna, you know, haul any more weight than you have to. So it's not uncommon that when they hike, they'll have stuff. They'll get things at different locations rather than carry all the weight. And that's part of the, uh, part of the economic impact. It's a benefit to different communities as they're progressing through the trail. Um, if they have horses, obviously, they're gonna have to take care of their horses. And so those needs have to be addressed. But once again, the, the trails that have equine, uh, as a part of their trail, uh, that's a benefit. It's an economic impact that they're able to, to address. So all these things are the things that where the counties and the cities and the communities can get a positive economic impact. That's one reason why these things tend to, uh, pay themselves back rather quickly, uh, is, uh, towards the investment. Um, the people who generally hike and bike and ride horses, uh, generally do invest a lot of money in those hobbies. And so this, it's not unusual.
So you're saying that it would be like from, uh, dawn to dusk, you know, it would be like daylight to dark?
I, I honestly can't a- answer those kind of questions, cause once again, I, I wanna.
That would be, I would be more in favor of something like that than having campsites along the way on there so somebody can spend the night on the trails. You know, that's, that's, that's another question too, you know, that kind of.
Kenneth, that's what the, uh, commit, the.
Yeah.
Board is gonna, just, those sorts of things are, they're gonna address and make the rules.
But I mean, somebody's gotta have an idea of what they want to look at even before you start.
Well, frankly, because I've not been to one of these trails and I plan on going, hopefully, at the same time y'all, y'all visit. Uh, those are the very same, very good example of the kind of questions that I think we should ask. But not only ask how they do it, but, you know, if they had a problem with it. Did it, did you have any negative impacts from any of the decisions you made? So once again, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel. If they had a negative impact, then we wanna know that on the front end so we don't do the same thing. That's, that's what I would encourage us to do.
Mike, can I ask you one question, please? Um, do you, I mean, you see more than most of us in this year end. Do you see railroads building, any new railroads as far as for new industry or new road? You think in fifty years, a hundred years, there's gonna be a need for this road to have to come back to supply things from different companies around here? And then they have to go and rebuy a new property where this property's already there? I mean, I'm just trying to think about.
Let me address your question in two, two ways. First is, oh, the railroads, trails program is actually a federal program. And the premise of it is, is that our communities, if we were to do this, we would be purchasing that route, that trail. But the way the, the law works is if there was ever a legitimate reason for that railroad to come back in place. Uh, then the law would allow it to happen. However, the communities would not lose a penny. The part of that transaction would include the railroad paying back in full the investment of the communities. So there's no risk financially for the communities if that were to happen. Now, am I aware of that, that that's ever happened? I'm personally not aware that that's ever happened. Now, I'm not, I'm not aware of it nationally.
Do you see new railroads being built anywhere in the state of Alabama?
One of the hardest things that we've tried to do in this state is to get new railroads. It's, it's very difficult, and I know some have been trying for decades to, to get them reset, reestablished. We're losing.
Get the, um, entrants to work.
Yeah.
Now, just don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot and give the property away and go to trails for rails. And then see a C and X where some railroad comes in and wants to, you know, pull a new railroad to, you rock them to the B and T.
Now, that's, that's the way this law, this federal program works, this federal law works, is that we're basically, uh, contracting with whoever the owner of the rail line is. And but if there were, let's say there's an industry that locates somewhere along that route, that's gonna employ two thousand people, you know, a major industry. Well, frankly, if it's needed, if rail is needed to supply that industry, then that's a legitimate reason why the, the company, the rail company could reapply for trail, the railroad to go back then. And, but once again, the communities are not risking anything because if they were to do that, they have to completely reimburse the, the investor.
The other thing, Mike, along that line, the other para- a paragraph in here that addresses that indicates that CSX. Is only interested in the acquisition of the entire length of the rail quarter by a single purchaser. And the reason is so that they can come back if necessary and deal with one owner.
Uh, and that's the reason for the partnership, instead of having, you know, fourteen different communities that, that own pieces of it all the way around. The part, that's what these other communities have done too. They create one partnership where there's one entity.
Or private owners. They're not gonna, based on that, I would say they'll never transfer ownership to a private owner, uh.
All but a very small, and this is something I think the, the details will come out later when we start digging into this. All but a very, very small portion of this, uh, this line is owned and fee-sent in some form or fashion by the railroad. Uh, so this, without reversionary clauses. So, so I know that there's a, there's a lot of misinformation that, but, but when they pull the railroad, the line up. That it automatically, it reabsorbs back to the property owners. That is simply not the case. Um, but I would rather us put the maps on the table with deeds available so we can show that. And and address those specific issues and those concerns rather than just throw out general information. And that's my intent.
Has anyone contacted Sappert or Babby about being on this committee?
Uh, Babby was at one of the, one of the information meetings and, um, I've heard from their mayor, they've invited me to come talk with their council. And once again, I, I didn't wanna just go talk, I wanted to show. So I've been waiting on those maps to come in, and as soon as I get those maps, I plan on calling, uh, Town of Babby and, and setting up a meeting. That's my, my, that's my intention.
Cause I know, I've talked with the mayor of Sappert and they're definitely against it.
Well, and and right now, I, I understand, but it's like we discussed here, without knowing real details and facts, I think we're just talking. There's not really anything being learned about anything. Um, I don't think you accomplish, either side accomplishes anything that way. I'd rather us get the actual facts and data and have.
And as I said earlier, do you reckon before we make any decision, whatever, Mr. Rushing and I have a video call with us? Cause if he's done this before, he can answer a lot of these questions.
He, he probably can, but once again, I, what I have, what little I've read on these different trails, cause I've read more general data, not trail-specific data. Um, different communities have done it different ways because you, you generally build these things that fit your community. So for instance, what one community did may not fit us exactly. We may learn from them and do some things like it, but it may not be a perfect fit.
But a lot of this is general questions.
No question, no question. And and he's been available on conference calls and some of these interest meetings we've had. Um, so once again, I don't have any doubt whatsoever. He would always agree to, to being a part of any Q and A. Um, but I also would, would hope that we can at least get together for the purpose of learning all that. So it's not just this commission at the meeting that frankly, cause the other communities are in the same boat. They're wanting to learn more too. So rather than having fourteen of these meetings.
Well, as Spencer said, we can invite the mayors from these small communities, the mayor of Andalusia, the mayor of Oop, that way everybody's there together at this one video conference. And we can discuss and talk with him.
And 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 I, I'm not disagreeing with that. What I'm suggesting is instead of just, just our county and our area, there's, there's three counties involved in this. They have all the same type of questions. And that's one reason why we wanted to organize this just as, to this partnership together. So we can get us all around one table and start having group meetings to where we, we get all this data at one time. Um, I think those other counties, Coffee and Geneva County, would have the exact same interest that you're expressing. And wanna ask the exact same questions that you're asking. And that's the very reason for the resolution is to put us into that situation where we can do that.
So, uh, I think everybody's had a chance to express concerns, raise questions, express support where appropriate. Uh, again, just to restate, uh, is the resolution is to say we would like to be at the table to join with Andalusia and Oop in their conversations. Along with, uh, Coffee County that's already adopted the resolution. We wanna be part of that conversation. And if in twelve months we say we're bailing out, we, we would have, this, this allows us that.
Correct.
Um. So it makes a lot of sense to me. I certainly support joining the group for conversation. And would love to see us act on this, uh, if y'all are inclined to do that. Uh, and I'm hearing you, Mike, Michael, that you would love to have the conversation with Rushing prior to.
That's right.
But, but actually, this is the group and the groups, the three counties and their local entities, that's the group to pull that together. And, uh, whether it's one meeting or a series of ten meetings, they can kind of coordinate that, bring the, bring the folks that have answers to the table for us.
But once in one of those ways getting answers is for us all to go and visit. So Mike, I, I don't want you to think that I'm trying to, to, to enrunt you on that. I'm just trying to make sure we don't re-spin our wheels. And do this three and four, five, six times when we can do it all at one time, where everybody can hear what's being, get, the information's been given to us. Cause you may, once again, I, I'm convinced you're each gonna have some questions that somebody else in these other counties is gonna have the exact same thoughts. And you may have some they didn't think of. I'd rather us all hear that data at the same time, so we're not constantly doing this. Uh, and that's the whole reason for setting this up. It's no commitment beyond, we're gonna get around the table and learn things and find out information. There's no commitment beyond that, but it's so that we don't start spinning wheels one county after the next. Um, that's, that's the entire reason why we're doing this. There's nothing more than that.
Here, let me say this one other thing, then I'll quit. My, my issue with it is this, is it, this thing says it's a resolution to support the establishment of the Wiregrass Trail Partnership. The word support in that says to me that we are supporting this thing. I'm not ready to say I'm supporting this. Uh, uh, the partnership, I, I understand it's almost a play on words. This to me is also a Nancy Pelosi thing, well, we got to pass it to see what's in it.
This is absolutely not a Nancy Pelosi thing.
Well, I, I mean, to me, to me, that's what we're saying. We've got to sign this resolution to have it seated at the table. Well, if that's the case.
Well, change the word support to organize.
Absolutely.
Cause that's what you're, you're organizing this group. That's your, what you're doing. That's, that's just a word choice. So change support, the word support to organize. That's fine, that's what we're doing.
The worry is that the Covina County Commission supports its membership in the Wiregrass Trail Partnership. Agrees to its membership, a what, a proposal there, Tony, to make that acceptable?
Look, to me, it's gonna be acceptable when we get landowners and people of this county to agree to it. Right now, I've got a real problem with agreeing to it when I got landowners that call to me saying, I don't. Um.
So what they don't want is the trail. They don't, they don't want the trail in place.
I, I'm not sure they don't want the trail in place, Greg. I think that they, they're like I would be or like you would be where you've got somebody. Um, five hundred yards, six hundred yards behind my house, and I don't know what they're doing back there. Or what's going on back there, and I've got livestock property or whatever. Uh, I, look, we're, we're a rural community. I live. Sitting in the middle of four hundred acres of ground. And I'm like, Kenny said while I go, if I hear somebody back over there, I, I'm kind of wondering what's going on behind me. I'm going to see. Well, now we're talking about turning people loose that may be on bicycles, may be on, you know, and, and I think Mike's a hundred percent right. He kind of helped my feelings about that seminar earlier this morning. You know, I, I don't think you're gonna deal with a lot of the, the problem issues back there with drunks or with people back there shooting or whatever. But had we had those people here in this, these landowners in this room, that they could have asked these questions and talked about this. I think it would have taken a lot of pressure off of every one of us.
Can, can I suggest that, uh, uh, once again, if we had that meeting before we get the information, I, I really don't think we could ever really address their questions. It would just be a kind of an open forum, that type thing.
I, 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 I agree with that.
So what I would suggest is let that be, I mean, let that be understood today, that the purpose is for us to gather information. For the purpose of addressing the concerns of our community. And that we have a public hearing, once we get that information, to allow, not only for the information to be given to the public so they can learn about it. But also the opportunity for the public then to respond, once they've heard some real data, some real facts.
So without signing this resolution, that means that we won't have this public hearing?
No, I think we should have it anyway. I'm just saying, just make it predestined. Put that in, you know, pin that into it. That's fine. Uh, some people think because it's not enrolling, you don't plan to do it. Just if you worry about that, add a sentence to it. That, that, that once we gather all this information and data, we'll, we'll come back with a public hearing and, and educate our community about it. Because, I mean, honestly, guys, when we get all that data, it, it may say something that we all don't like. And we may never even get to that step because it may, it won't be an issue we won't follow through with. But if we do think it's something that could help our community, then by all means, I think the first obligation we have is to communicate with our community and to let them hear this information.
Let me, let me ask you, uh, do you, do you guys, uh, Tony, hear your concerns? Do you see that it could potentially have a positive impact?
Oh, absolutely.
So us, so with that in mind, it's worth at least looking at, reviewing to determine whether we wanna move forward or not. We could in, we could put in here a paragraph that says, we'll make no further commitments beyond joining the group. Prior to conducting a public, a public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, within six months or something. I think that'd give you time to, it may happen in thirty days, but that'd give you time to begin to pull the information together. And you could begin to have those public hearings. We could incorporate that in here.
I think you just say before any, before any other step, you have to have a public hearing. That would not make it time-based, just say before any other step, there has to be a public hearing. And and guys, I think you would do that anyway. I think that's normal.
And like Tony said, it says the resolution to support. What if we changed to a resolution to be a member?
Sure.
Of this, but not support, because it's not sure support. We want the information, let's see what it is.
Sure.
Because, you know, like he is saying.
It's saying support the establishment of this. It's not saying we support this. It's support the establishment of this partnership. That's all we're supporting. I mean, we could change it, it don't matter to me, but I read it as we're supporting the establishment of this partnership. It's not saying we support rails to trails deadhead, we're fixing to do it. We're supporting the establishment of the partnership. That's all that this is saying by signing that. Now, like I said, we can change it to.
We agree to listen to the establishment of the Wiregrass. We agree to listen.
This is committee, you have to join the group.
And and the, the point is, we, we want you to be a part of this group because we're all gonna have these questions. And we want you to be, uh, be at the table so we can all hear the same information. I mean, frankly, if you have multiple meetings, people hear multiple things. I'd rather us all be at one meeting where we all hear the same thing. And we all receive the same data. So there's no confusion, there's no, uh, chaos because of being at multiple places, multiple meetings.
The, uh, real concern being expressed is that we, we, you know, we'd like to have had more information today, today. We'd like to have had, uh, teleconference before today. And that's what this group is gonna bring to the table to allow us to get that information before we take the next steps.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, right now, I know enough to be able to ask some questions, but I do, by no means know enough to ask other questions we're gonna, we're gonna wanna ask later. And I think y'all are in the same position then that I am. I mean, right now, you know just enough to be scared of it and be worried about it. But as we learn more information, frankly, it's gonna make you ask more questions. And that process will take some time because this is new to all of us. I mean, I've never done something like this. I doubt y'all have ever done anything like this. So we're all gonna have to learn from scratch. Uh, that's not gonna be a speedy process. Once again, this is not a one-year project. This is multiple years, even if it were to work, it's gonna be multiple years. But the learning phase at the beginning, we have to start somewhere. And that's, that's all this is about, is about getting us all around one table. Getting us all at one spot, going, visiting as a group to these other trails. And then coming back and let's, it, let's communicate that information to our community. And personally, I'm gonna be visiting some of these very communities that y'all have heard and expressed some, some concern about. Because I, I don't think you run from those questions. I think you have to go and address those questions. And I just don't like addressing them with trust me. Uh, that's never the right answer. Um, I think the right answer is let's bring them facts and something real to be able to show. And I'm not there yet, and if I were, I'd already have those meetings. Uh, but I think y'all are in the same position. You need that information before you're ever gonna be able to answer those questions.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know Coffee Counties went in and said they agree and support it, but they don't have like a mile and a half actual. Coming through them. I know Kinston's got some, but then the actual county part, it's not that much. So they don't have a big section there, so it wouldn't be a lot either way to them, so.
Well, and and you're, and you're, and I'm gonna go ahead and address this, this point. The, the. Well, a- and, and you're, and you're, and I'm gonna go ahead and address this, this point. The, the way this partnership just worked in these other locations, you're, you're not just covering the area that's in, within your jurisdiction. We're joining a partnership, so we're, we're all together. And the reason why that wouldn't be fair, and the best example I can think of is Geneva. Geneva has a large portion of the, the, the trail in their county. But the, probably the biggest expanse in this whole process is, is that bridge over the river that's no longer existing right now. Uh, there are some options on that, but it wouldn't be fair to say, "All right, Geneva, you gotta go build a bridge." I mean, that's just not fair, to put the whole burden on them uh, for a project that's gonna benefit every one of us along the way. And so we're, what I would say is, let's look at these other places that have put together these, these partnerships and learn how they made that work. And then let's, because that way, nobody's getting burned, nobody's getting stuck, nobody's paying an unfair portion. Uh, so for instance, town of Kinston, uh, town of Babi, I mean, they're not capable of paying anything on a significant level. They're not of that size. Y'all know that, I know that, so let's not kid ourselves. Uh, we shouldn't expect that. We, the, the communities like Andalusia, city of Geneva, um, that are better able to do things, my expectation is they'll likely step up in a bigger pla- bigger way. Um, and, and I think that's how these other communities have done it, but those are the very tight questions, Kent, that we need to ask and see how they've done that. But my understanding is, they worked as a partnership for a reason. It wouldn't be fair for people to just break out their sections.
That would also be the same with just, after they've been speaking, the maintaining of it.
That's, that's correct.
Once it's established, if it ever is.
My understanding is that's exactly right.
The burden would not be on Covington County to maintain the partner in Covington County.
That's correct. It's a partnership that would be the one doing it, and it's not based on just jurisdiction. That's not how it's, how it's set up. Now, I wanna learn more about that as well, and that's another reason why I wanna talk with some of those elected leaders in these other areas, is to hear the details on how they set up their partnerships on those type of issues like maintenance. Cause frankly, maintenance is the long-term issue, always is. Y'all, if y'all do, y'all now know that, that y'all have dealt with roads and other issues. Um, that's the real expense over the long period of time is always maintenance. Now, fortunately, if this is a non-motorized trail, it doesn't take near the abuse that a motorized trail would take. It's gonna be far less. Uh, and you've got a rail bed, it's already a hardened bed, uh, which frankly, as y'all know, is gonna make it a little easier to maintain. So, um, but, but those are the very legitimate questions that I've got, that I wanna ask those other elected officials about.
Anybody have a proposal for changing the wording on that first resolved, now therefore be it resolved, the Covington County Commission supports its membership in the Wiregrass Trail Partnership? Thoughts on other wording there?
Like I said, we agreed to this, to the resolution.
And agrees to this. Okay. We'll ask Stephanie to, to draft, change it if there's a, if there's a proposed change. I'd love for us to entertain, uh, a motion to, to, uh, adopt the resolution and keep our seat at the table and, and, and participate in the conversation over the next few months, and let's see where, you know, what we can learn.
Make a motion based on any wording that we need to change, make a motion that we accept, adopt it.
There's a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Thoughts on next step? As opposed to adopting the resolution today? Thoughts on next steps, uh, what would you like to see us do relative to the conversation? Because it's gonna, it's gonna go forward.
Ms. Ms. Chairman, can I suggest that y'all might actually pin in those changes before y'all actually vote on the resolution? And I think that might help some members, if they saw the words. Um, and I think that you're only looking at a s- couple of issues as far as the word change. Um, and since you've got quite an agenda over here, it looks like you're gonna take up, you probably have a little time.
Okay.
But now, and I'm not trying to speak for commissioners.
Nope, that's, that's, we appreciate your input, Mike. Uh, appreciate your.
You have been more than gracious with your time, and we appreciate the input you're putting into it too. We thank you, we thank you. What are you?
Like I said, I, you know, I would still love to talk with Mr. Rushing in other, in other areas, other officials in other counties that this has worked in, prior to.
I, I think the, the next step, once we've organized the partnership, was for us to have a meeting where we do exactly that type thing. Um, but we had to get everybody at least commit to joining the, the group to, to learn more about it. Um, and, and that's, and guys, I think y'all, y'all would agree, that's reasonable to approach it from that perspective, that we all try to join a group to learn more about it. Um, I don't think you'll see one of these resolutions that says more than that, because no one's gonna make a commitment without knowing more information, nor should you. So this is not asking you to put your commitment on a project yet. Uh, we're not there. Frankly, we're a good ways off in that.
I agree that, that we don't have enough information yet to, um, to sell it, to, to bring the public, um, to the table at this point, cause you can't answer any questions. But this is a necessity, so that you can garner the information and bring it back to the public, and then you can hear what they have to say. Um, and if there's certain wording in particular that makes anyone nervous, I'll be happy to do whatever.
Look, it, it, and I, I told you earlier, this. This kinda thing scares me to death when I got a lady sitting against the back wall back there. It's been two years, they've been driving ten miles around because we couldn't build a bridge back, cause people in Pigeon Creek. I've got people in my district that are riding roads that are absolutely falling apart, because we can't afford to resurface roads. And then I've got a resolution laying in front of me that wants me to become partnership of a forty-three mile bike trail. That's hard for me to swallow. To take that tax dollar from that lady, from those people up there to move here. That, that's, that's hard for me to swallow.
And at this point, that's not being asked. Um, and I, but I also think that's the kinda question, and that's the kinda issue that I would like for us to go talk with these elected officials in these other areas. My understanding is the revenue that they've generated in their communities, because the economic impact actually did help bring more money to their, to their coffers, so that they can do more things in their community. But I don't, I don't wanna speculate on that. I'd rather us all go up there and for ourselves, ask those questions and ask very specific questions. Cause guys, listen, I'm also convinced that you, we may learn some things that are not good, that you may also wanna make sure in a public hearing that's made known. But you're not gonna know that unless you were at the table, learning about it, so.
I, I guess, I guess being simple-minded is my issue here. I, I, I don't understand the resolution to become part of the table, because without Covington County in this, they're gonna need Covington County in this. I know we're not gonna stop it, that's not what I'm saying. But they're gonna need Covington County in this, but the resolution's got to be passed to give you a seat at the table for these discussions.
It's to create the partnership, so that we have a single entity, not fourteen or fifteen separate entities. And, and that's where, once again, apparently that's the process that everyone in these communities have gone through. Um, and, and at this point, there's no commitment other than establishing the partnership, the single entity, for the purpose of learning more. That's all it's about at this point. It should not be about any more than that at this point. We should not be making any decisions that have any financial impact at this point. We're way too early for that. Um, but I also think that we have a responsibility to our constituents to find out as much about this issue, good and bad, so that we can inform our constituents about the good and bad of it. So it's not just based on, you know, what we think might happen. Um, because guys, we, I, I have concerns, they're very similar to the concerns that you have today. I started with some of those same things. That's what got me reading more information. Um, I feel confident you're gonna wanna do the same thing. Um, and I don't read things from a perspective of, I'm trying to be convinced to do something. I read it, just like I do Montgomery. I read everything plain, black and white. Is it helping my community or hurting my community? That's how I read everything I, I take in, in, whether it be a bill or what, no matter what it is. And if it's helping my community, then I keep reading, and I keep learning. If it hurts my community, then it's, it's done, it's over. But I don't make it complicated. I, I handle everything the same way. That's how I plan, that's how I'm approaching this issue as well. I haven't made a final call, but I have an obligation to my community, and that's why I was elected, to do that, to learn more about things and to represent my community. And that's what I wanted to do.
Anybody else have thoughts? Comments? What I would love, love to suggest is that we get a second, and then a motion to table. And we'll have two weeks before the next meeting, and hopefully, we could get Mr. Rushing to have a conversation with the commission in a, uh, between now and that meeting, and it may allow us to, to make a decision on voting it up or down.
And he, because he does work for the University of Alabama, I feel fairly certain it's not available today. Um, okay. I could be wrong. This week can be completely up for it. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your time, Mike.
Thank you.
Greg, let me say, let me say one other thing, because I seem to be the one up here most against this. Y'all, I'm not against this. I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm honestly trying to look out for the tax dollars a year and sort of will the people in this, that have property on this. Um, you know, I.
You know, I think all of us are talking. I think all of us have that same interest.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I've, I've been the most vocal, I think, about the, to sound against this, and I'm not. I just think that we owe it to the people of this county, the taxpayers of this county, to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing to do. I think being at the table with this would be a good thing. I think we've just got to be careful about saying we support it, or that we're behind it, or, or whatever. Uh, I would love to have an opportunity for us to relook at this, to let Stephanie redo this in a way that, you know, would give us a seat at the table, if signing this is what it takes to have a seat at the table, to do that, because I think we owe it to the people of this county to be there. But I also think we owe it to the people of this county to do the right thing about it.
That's right. Let me, let me address one comment you made a while ago about the, uh, Pigeon Creek project, and taking money from that and putting to this. That money's in place, that money's not gonna move. It's very important that we realize that that money is on the table and will be spent only for that project.
You and I know that.
This money is not being asked for at all. We are not being asked to put money here at all. So at this point, it's not about, it's, it's, it's not about taxpayer money. Today, it may be in three months, or six months, and we'll take those up at the time. Well, tell me, tell me what your wishes are. There is a motion, we can then, uh, have a second and, and act on that now, or we could table that. If we get a second on that motion, we could table it, or, uh, or it'll die for, for lack of a second. Any thoughts on that?
I'm with Tony. I think that if we word it a little bit, I'll be more subject to vote.
So you're willing for it to come back up at the next meeting, if we can get some additional, uh, information, and also have a, uh, look by the attorney on tweaking the.
That's right.
Resolution. All right. We're gonna let it die today for lack of a second, with a consensus that we'll bring it up at the next meeting, if we have something prepared. One of the next couple of meetings, for, uh, probably a lot less conversation, and hopefully action, you know, positive or negative way of voting up or down. All right. With that said, we'll, we'll, uh, recess for eleven minutes. We'll come back in at, uh, ten fifteen. Thank y'all so much.